I'm calling this meeting to order. This is a Redmond City Council Study Session held on Tuesday, May 28, 2024, commencing at 7:00 p.m. Council members are in attendance are Councilmember Stewart, Councilmember Nueva Camina, Council Vice President Forsyth, Councilmember Salaah Houdin, and Councilmember Anderson is online, and myself, Council President Kritzer. There are three items on the agenda tonight. 2022 Financial Audit Exit Entrance Conference, American Public Works Association Accreditation, and Council Talk Time. The first item on the agenda is the 2022 Financial Audit Entrance Conference, and we have representatives here today from the State Auditor's Office with us. And I also see that we have some of our staff. We have Haritha Nara here to help to introduce this item. Go ahead, Ms. Nara.
Sure, thank you. I actually have Julia Elsom, who is the accounting manager, who will introduce this item. I'm just here to cover for Kelly Fettig.
So I'm here to introduce the 2022 Audit Entrance Conference, as Councilmember Vanessa Kritzer mentioned. And so the timing of the 2022 audit was delayed due to the implementation of our new financial system. And so we've been, we were working with the auditors and the audit team on that delay throughout this last year. And it will also delay the starting of our 2023 Financial Statement Audit. But so today, we're here to introduce Angela, as well as Haji, and they will talk about the 2022 Audit Entrance Conference.
All right, thank you.
You may go ahead and share my screen here.
Right. Thank you, Angela. All right, so good evening, everybody. Again, thank you for attending our entrance conference today. So this is where we'll share the scope of the Fiscal Year 2022 Financial and Federal Grant Compliance Audits. My name is Haji Adams again. I'm the Audit Manager for Team Northern County, and joining me is Angela Funamori, who's the Audit Lead. And then Supervisor on the Audit is Maggie Wallace. So the presentation today is going to be a summary of the audit scopes. And supplement that presentation, we have provided a packet of information for you all that includes the entrance conference agenda and handouts as well. So the Washington State Auditor's Office, we're tasked with being the auditor of all public funds. So we're responsible for auditing all state local governments. We conduct over 2,400 audits each year. So on this slide, you'll see all the different types of audits that we conduct with accountability, financial, and federal grant compliance audits, representing those that we conduct the most of. And as mentioned, we'll plan to conduct a financial and federal grant compliance audit of the city. So the purpose of the financial statement audit is to issue an opinion on whether the financial statements are free from material error and are fairly presented. Financial statement audits are very important to users that review your financial statements. It lets them know whether they can place reliance on the information that's presented in them. And then this audit will also look at whether the city has adequate internal controls and procedures in place as well to ensure that the financial statements are prepared correctly, that there are processes in place as well to detect errors prior to them being submitted to us as well for audit. And then second, that federal grant compliance audit, so that audits required any time the city spends $750,000 or more in federal funds. So what we'll do is we'll review the funding that the city received and expended as well. And then we'll select individual grants for audit, and then determine whether the city has complied with those requirements of the federal funding. And then at the end of the audit, we will issue an opinion on the city's compliance and share those results with the federal government as well. I'll then hand it over to Angela, and she'll go over the scopes of the audits.
Thank you, Haji. Okay, so as Haji mentioned, our financial statement audit will cover the period of January 1 through December 31 of 2022. The objective of the financial statement audit is to issue an opinion as to whether the financial statements presented for audit are fairly stated and materially correct. Our audits are conducted in accordance with government auditing standards, and those standards require that we review the city's internal controls and process that it goes through to prepare the financial statements. Should we become aware of any issues with the process that could or did allow misstatements to occur, or identify instances of noncompliance that could impact the information presented in the statements, we are required to alert you of this during our audit. And as also, as previously mentioned, at the end of our engagement, we will issue a financial statement audit report to the city in accordance with GAAP. This report will detail the opinion being issued, the results of the city's internal controls and compliance, along with a full set of financial statements. We also plan to conduct a federal grant compliance or single audit for the period January 1 through December 31 of 2022. Our opinion will be issued in accordance with government auditing standards and the uniform guidance. So here, we will also provide an opinion on the internal controls and compliance over the major federal programs. And included on the slide are the selected federal programs that we will be reviewing. Throughout the course of the audit, we may find that recommendations are necessary to bring to your attention. Our office has three primary levels of audit recommendations that are used to convey the significance of the audit issues identified. Findings formally address issues in an audit report. Findings report significant results of the audit, such as significant deficiencies and material weaknesses in internal controls, misappropriation and material abuse, or noncompliance with laws, regulations, or policies. Here, you'll be given the opportunity to respond to a finding, and this response will be published in the audit report. Management letters communicate control deficiencies and noncompliance, misappropriation or abuse that are less significant than a finding, but still important enough to formally be communicated to the governing body. Management letters are referenced, but are not included in the audit report. And lastly, we have exit items which constitute our lowest level of written recommendations. Exit items are very normal in the audit process and are considered as housekeeping items as they often address best practices or minor noncompliance matters. Now, at the end of our engagement, we will provide a full list of exit items to management for their consideration. Here, we would like to take the opportunity to share a few reminders with you today about our audit. Our office is committed to protecting your confidential or sensitive information, and we recognize that the audit may require a need to review sensitive information. And when this occurs, please let us know immediately so we can ensure the data is adequately safeguarded. And if you have any questions on our protocols, please feel free to reach out to Haji, Maggie, or myself. With audit costs, we've shared an estimate of audit costs in your packet. This estimate is on track with previous estimates and has already been provided through the engagement letter. For audit dispute process, now should there be any concerns during our audit process, please know that we have an established process for you to voice those concerns. Our dispute process is designed to provide you with access to progressive levels of management within our organization to hear your concerns. And we encourage that you start with your local audit manager, Haji Adams, and additional representatives, having included in your packet, all the way up to the state auditor, should there be a need. And lastly, we always like to remind our governments about loss reporting requirements. Should you become aware of any known or suspected losses of public funds, state law requires that you immediately file a notification with our office. And this process is easy to perform, and you can file a notification directly from our website. And once we receive the notification, a team of specialists reviews the notification and determines if any follow-up or investigation is needed. And state and local governments may also be required to report cybersecurity issues, including security breaches and cyber fraud. Reporting is required to the AGO if a single security incident affects more than 500 Washington residents. Reporting to SAO may also be necessary if the event involves financial records or finances. The requirement to report is not dictated by number of affected parties, or whether you have experienced a financial loss. State and local government employees should alert us to suspected fraud and notifications can be made on our website, and a link has been provided on the slide and in your packet at the bottom of Page 2. One question we often receive is who audits the state auditor? And to ensure our audit satisfies government auditing standards, our office receives external peer reviews every three years by the National State Auditor's Association. A link has been provided where you can access the most recent peer review results, and the last rating we received was a pass, which is the highest level of assurance that the review can provide. Being on the regularly scheduled audit, please note that we have support services available at no additional cost to you year-round. First, our local government support team is available to assist with annual financial reporting and any accounting services. The local government support team strives to ensure our local governments are prepared to meet their annual reporting requirements. And additionally, they offer trainings throughout the year to keep you updated on the latest accounting and reporting topics. Additionally, the Center of Government Innovation is another great resource for local governments. The center provides free resources and services to help local governments work better, solve problems, and improve operations. This team of specialists is available by phone, online, or in-person to offer assistance at no additional cost. Beyond the specific areas planned for your audit, we'd like to take a moment to share the following resources that may be of interest to you. You will find that the first resource on Page 6 through 8 of your packet includes the upcoming Gatsby pronouncements. And the second resource, starting on Page 9 through 30 of your packet, is the Audit Connection. And that includes topics such as updated loss reporting, fraud-fighting toolbox, cybersecurity, and much more. And this concludes our presentation to the city on our Fiscal Year 2022 Audit Entrance. We'd like to thank everyone for your time today, and at this moment, we'd like to open it up for any comments or questions.
Thank you very much. Other questions from the council? Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you so much, and I appreciate the chance. This is actually our second fiduciary topic of the evening, if you've been following along. I wanted to bring up the community facility districts. So last year, we had a note in the previous year's audit related to our practices of accounting for the community facilities districts. We had been continuing to practice financial protocols the same as we always had, and then suddenly, last year, there was a change when the Auditor's Office didn't like that approach. And so we received a note. And so this being our 2022 Financial Audit Entrance Conference, I wanted to discuss how we might go ahead, how we're planning to manage the known conflict that's going to arise. I don't know if that's a question for you, Ms. Elsom, or...
I can answer that.
Yeah, please do.
I can answer that. So we made the recommended changes to our 2021 financial statements, and we continued that change in our 2022 financial statements.
Great. So just to say it's super crystal clear for like posterity's sake, we believe that we have corrected everything according to the auditor's preferences on this one.
Exactly, yeah.
For 2022. Okay, wonderful. Thank you.
Councilmember Nueva Camina?
Thank you. In the report, this question is for either Angela or Haji. One of the slides in there said that there would be a report of singular security breaches affecting more than 500 Washingtonians. So my question is, is the data being tracked, then, if an organization, if a city is getting close to that 500 on several instances, you know, to kind of be a signal to where, hey, we may have an issue, but doesn't quite break that 500 threshold?
Right, so we don't do any kind of tracking. That's just what the expectation is for the city to follow.
Okay, great. So just to be clear, then, it will be on the city to be tracking if we're nearing that threshold on any type of regular occurrence? Great.
Correct.
Other questions? Thank you so much for the detailed presentation. I'm not seeing any other hands raised, so we'll look forward to seeing the results of the audit and eventually seeing you at the exit conference in hopefully a matter of months. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Have a good evening.
The next item on the agenda is the American Public Works Association Accreditation. Erin Burt, our Public Works Director, will introduce this item. Director Burt, go ahead.
Good evening, and I'll be presenting as well here. Let me pull up the slide deck just a second. Good evening, council. This is going to probably be the most exciting briefing that you've had so far this year, because I'm super excited about it, in all seriousness, and this process and path that the Public Works Department is going to be starting here. The intent of this briefing, just give you an overview of this accreditation process, and then to talk to you about where we're headed and the type of support that we are going to be needing in the future. So the American Public Works Association, like many national associations, has an accreditation process. And what this process does essentially is it causes us, as a public works department, to take a hard look at our processes and procedures, and to ensure that we're aligned with best practices across the nation, based on a series of best practices that are established by the American Public Works Association. When I came on board, this was something that I looked at initially to do, and it took me about a year before we got things aligned for us to begin to head down this pathway. But one of the big things that it's going to provide us as a department, like many of the departments here at the city, is that soon I'm going to be facing a bow wave of retirement, so a lot of longstanding employees who have been here. A great example of this was last year, I lost three public, excuse me, project managers out of the Capitol Division, and collectively, 100 years of experience walked out the door. So what this process does is it helps us define and document our policies and procedures, right? It's something that we in government always talk about, having standard operating procedures, and hey, do that knowledge capture. But the reality is, with workloads and how things are, that often doesn't happen. So this is going to help force us to do that as we take a top-to-bottom look at our organization and how we do things. What's exciting about this is that, you know, there's probably over about 16,000 public works departments here in the United States. Only about 250 departments have this accreditation here within Washington State. Our neighbors in Bellevue, Shoreline, and Bremerton, and I think Bainbridge Island recently got this accreditation as well. It is a process. It can take up to three years to do it correctly. I've put out the goal and the challenge to our public works department to get this done in two years. I've assigned one of my managers to be our point person for accreditation. And what it does is it will force us to take a look at everything that we're doing and integrate the accreditation process into our work plans as we move through the remainder of this year and into 2025. So the process is a five-step process, is defined by APWA. It's not the timelines to get it done. There's no set timelines. It's based on what we can accomplish internally. It starts with the self-assessment. So like all things, we pay, we get a manual, and we do that initial assessment. And what it is, it's 36 chapters that covers almost 360 distinct items or actions that a public works department should undertake or be undertaking to meet best practices. Now, these chapters cover everything from human resources, strategic planning at the leadership level, to if you have a cemetery within your purview, to airports and so forth. So you take a look at that assessment, you determine what applies to you, then you put together an initial application process. It costs us some money, a couple thousand dollars to get the process started. And then you go through this improvement process. You have access through the APWA website. There's basically a SharePoint software that you use to track your progress. You upload your best practices. You can compare your best practices to a library of best practices from other departments that have their accreditation. And then once you get to that point where you feel that you're ready for your evaluation, you contact APWA. They send out a hit squad. They come here, we put them up, and then they take a look at all of our documentation. It's about a three- or four-day process where they go through everything that we're looking at from top to bottom. The great thing about the APWA process is that when they come in and do your evaluation, it's not necessarily a pass/fail, but if you're not hitting the standard, they'll point that out, and if you can make that correction at that time, they allow you to do so in order to gain that accreditation. Or after they leave, they give you a period of time in which to make that correction to come into standard. So after the evaluation is done and you pass, then you get that accreditation, which is actually a pretty big deal. And from that, then, is you do a reaccreditation process every four years after that. So that forces you as an agency to ensure that you're remaining in standard. So right now, if you look at the steps on the map, we're probably about step five right now. We're into, deep into the self-assessment in terms of how we're taking a look at the codes, the policies, and procedures that we need to do, and we'll be putting in our application here later this summer to get the process started. Now, of the 36 chapters, we've identified that actually 29 of those chapters apply to the Redmond Public Works Department. And I'm sorry, there's 450 elements within those 36 chapters, but we've identified 29 chapters and 360 distinct elements that will apply to us. One of the benefits of taking a look at this level of effort is really understanding how the public works department impacts other departments within the city and that kind of interrelated connection that we have. You know, for example, we rely on human resources for the hiring practices that will be a part of this, and then we also have that deep connection with the planning department when it comes to permit issuances and other actions that we have to monitor, whether on construction or actions within the right-of-way. We're underway right now. We're moving into Phase 2, which is the application process. And then our Phase 3 of the self-assessment, I'm essentially giving ourselves probably about 16 to 18 months to get through that. We have working teams already identified, we have the workload divided up amongst the managers, and then it's the identification of how deep do we have to go on the various elements. So some of the things, it can be a policy statement that we have that meets the accreditation process. Other aspects is we have to get down into the policies and procedures, right? So policy, generalized statement of where we're going, the procedures laying out how we're actually going to do those things. One thing that we have identified that we will be bringing in front of council, probably sometime next year, is a package of code changes that we need to bring into alignment in order to meet this accreditation. The Redmond Municipal Code right now, especially, you know, for example, a big component, Title 13, dealing with water and sewer services, it's really out of whack. The code has kind of been Frankenstein together over the years, and we haven't had a comprehensive look at the code and how it applies to public works, and then also other aspects within the city, especially the planning department. An example of that being is that as some functions have transferred over the years from public works to planning, there's ambiguity in the code as it relates to, it refers to a director, and for taking action, for example, on a stop work orders within the right-of-way or on construction in general. Now, we know that function exists right now within the planning department, Director Helen, for a stop work order, but the code right now doesn't explicitly state that that authority rests within the planning department. Also, minor things in there, that my position, I'm referred to as the director, the director of public works, the director of the public works department, and I think, hey, you, that guy, as well, in there, probably to some mix. So it's also doing a bunch of administrative cleanup of the code to bring in everything into alignment and up to, you know, 2024, 25 standards. As mentioned, you know, the big lift that we're going to have right now, that's going to probably take the majority of our time over the next probably 12 to 14 months, is going through the code chapter by chapter and doing the, evaluating the code impacts and the code cleanup across the board. And as mentioned, we'll be bringing that forward as a separate package of action, but as we get closer to that, we'll definitely be setting up some informational briefing and let you know where we're headed on that. And that takes me to the end. Pending your questions.
Thank you so much. Other questions? Council Vice President Forsyth?
Thank you. This is an exciting process, and I look forward to hearing more about it as it goes along. Will council be involved, or not involved, but kept apprised of the results of your findings and for the process improvements? Like, when you get towards the end, are we going to see what that has looked like over the last year and a half?
Absolutely. I'll even be able to print you out everything if you want. Probably be a nice book, but for sure.
I think we're all the type of people that will read that.
I know you will. That's what I appreciate.
I'm also interested, what are the other benefits that, like, maybe weren't listed on this slide? Are there retention benefits for keeping staff, getting new staff onboard, hiring? Will this, will staff members get accredited? And does this open us up to different grants, maybe?
So what this does is it's an accreditation for the department as a whole. It's not individual employees within the department. It's a, I will say, it's a prestige and honor achievement as well, because the amount of work that needs to go into it. But one of the reasons why I chose to go for this goal, and talking with the mayor and Melissa as well, is that understanding that, you know, the public works department right now, we are a group of professionals, but we also need a binding action in which to further increase that professionalism. And focus our, I should say, narrow our focus in terms of what we are doing right now, documenting that, and ensuring that we have that in place, especially when we get staff turnover in the future. So as we are accredited, we have these best practices in place, we bring on new staff, it's easier to bring them in because we have that true playbook, and we're just not relying on, hey, Jim knows this, yeah, he'll pass on that information as he knows. What we're finding in our initial assessment already is that we have a lot of this information already. It's just in disparate forms and formats and locations. And bringing this together as a collective goal, actually, staff are beginning to rally around and see the benefits of it. And so engagements on the staff working groups has so far been positive.
Great. And I can only assume that having all of this knowledge and having these conversations will help with any grant proposals in the future and...
Absolutely. It might be able to give us that opportunity to see some of those things we might be missing.
Great. Thanks.
Councilmember Salaah Houdin?
Yeah, thank you. It is really exciting to hear that there's going to be the standard operating procedure that's going to come out of this. And two quick questions. One, is there a plan to, or have you already, you know, reached out to Bellevue, Shoreline, Bainbridge, Bremerton, to see, you know, what they've gotten out of this, and any tips that they would give to maybe shorten our process or that?
Yeah, absolutely. As mentioned, APWA maintains a library of best practices. And then our accreditation manager, Amanda Balzer, who works in the director's office now as our Policy and Planning Manager, she's reached out to our neighboring jurisdictions. And I have no shame in beg, borrowing, and stealing great ideas in order to... in order to help improve our organization.
Great, thank you. And then a follow-up question, just specific to APWA. You gave a timeline that I really appreciate. You know, it's bold in getting us to our outcomes a little bit sooner than the average. Is there any concern from APWA's side on, will there be any slowdown? Has there been any slowdown anticipated from their work in the past?
No. In talking with their accreditation manager, I mean, some departments take five years, others get it done in two. And so, you know, I don't want an effort like this to lag. And so that's why we put the aggressive timeline to go after it.
Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you. I'm super excited to hear about this. Congratulations, Public Works Department. I'm looking forward to the outcomes of the process for you. And APWA is a wonderful organization. And just a quick question is, we are a member of APWA, is that correct?
That is correct.
Awesome. Good luck on the process. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Nueva Camina?
Director Verrick, I am so excited for this. I am ridiculously excited. We talk a lot about, we're striving to have Redmond be this incredible place to not only live, but also to work, and setting clear expectations. And when we implement an SOP, a standard operating procedure, then people know what the expectation is. And then there's less frustration and people can, like, they know and it's clear. As several times, my colleague, Councilmember Stewart, will say, clarity is kindness. You know, and this is beautifully, it will make it crystal clear. So I'm excited for this. Understanding that this is going to be putting forth a lot of resources in both time and finances in it. But when I think about on the other side of this, not only in two years, when we have the, the, the book, when we have that, one will have that to show, but then less concern of information, historical knowledge going out the door, as you had pointed out, or things even bottlenecking, because now we'll have someplace to turn in case a particular employee with that specialized knowledge is not available. So I'm very excited.
I appreciate that. And one of the great things about this is it forces us to get into process mapping. I mean, everybody talks about lean, things like that. But in many of these elements within these chapters, I mean, we need to define the workflow, right? And put it on paper so everybody has that crystal clarity on how do we get from step A to step Z to complete this process? We have several of those workflows. Some of them haven't been updated since 2006. So it's that forcing function to get us to that point. And that's why I'm super excited that we got the support from the mayor. And it's great to hear the support from the council that we can be bold and get to this point.
Yeah. Great job.
Thank you.
Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you so much. This strikes me as a body of work that is an investment with benefits that pay returns later. I wanted to ask about a couple of the financial pieces in the memo. It describes the $15,000 as, that's the fees and whatnot to participate in the program. Great. And it says that they're to be paid for through the utilities and general funds. There's not a specific budget offer here. But I guess my question is actually about the, much beyond the $15,000. This sounds like a significant body of work for the team. So how are you accounting for the input of time for the leadership team to take this on? And what the financial impact might be in terms of what you might be bringing forward in the next biennium as a result of what you're discovering?
So with the costs involved right now, we're just absorbing those in professional services costs. So I'm not seeing an additional ask for any money for this accreditation process. In terms of the time and the engagement, this aspect and discussion about standard operating procedures, for example, Chris Stinger, one of my deputies, you know, that's been his big mantra ever since he came onboard. So even before we've gotten into this accreditation process, he's been working with the staff out at the Maintenance and Operations Center for those crews to be able to document their processes, right? So the SOPs that we have in place. And as I mentioned, we have a lot of this work done already. But the time commitment is that the accreditation process has been delegated in terms of the goals and the accomplishment has been wrapped into my managers' and deputies' work plans for the year. So we have undertaken and been talking about this aspect of knowledge management, knowledge transfer within the Public Works Department. I started having that discussion almost since day one, which, about two years ago when I started. So when we built our work plans for 2024, this component was baked into the managers' goals already. So they already allocated the time. At a minimum, what I've asked my managers to do is that two hours a week out of a 40-hour work week to focus on accreditation. Now, that workload on staff or engagement in working groups will ebb and flow as we move through this documented process. But when we forecasted this time commitment out, we're not seeing it taking away from anything else. Because it's a lot of that snug administrative work that we should have been doing and baked into our regular day-to-day operations to begin with. Now, it's just the director has a focus on it, and we're ensuring that it gets done.
And you mentioned the 100 years of experience that recently retired in a particular piece of the department. Is there, do you anticipate needing to consult with former leaders? Or is this a, we have it right now, we can capture the knowledge right now? Or do you anticipate needing to rely on former colleagues?
I think for the most part, right now, we have the information we need. So we may or may not. It all depends on, hey, so-and-so was really good at this process. Hey, can we reach out to them as a potential? But not necessarily right now.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm not seeing other questions from my colleagues. I'll say, they asked a bunch of the questions that I had. One quick follow-up question on budget. So looking forward when we get into the process improvements phase, which will be in the next biennium, do you anticipate that in the biennial budget there'll be some asks to be able to fund any of those process improvements? Or do you think those can just be done as well, kind of absorbed through your general budgeting that you'll plan for?
Right now, I think it will have to be just through general budgeting. I can't say yet. We have to kind of peel back the onion, actually see what we're looking at. There may be something that we uncover in a process that we need to rewrite that may have a budget impact in the future. I just don't know yet.
Great, thanks. And to the point about the amount of kind of staff turnover that may already be happening, I imagine there may also be opportunities of doing this process at the same time as you're training new staff into those roles or bringing new folks on, to be able to kind of do that documentation simultaneously or gather those learnings?
Yeah, absolutely. You know, we have a data initiative going on right now within the Public Works Department where we're taking a look at all the different type of information that we collect and how we collect it. And we've determined that essentially we have about 120 distinct data lines of things that we collect, everything from tree canopy to right-of-way permits. So a good part of this effort is ensuring that we can align that, those data streams, right? In order to ensure that we're getting the right information to make the right decisions. And that's going to be a big heavy lift for us as we continue to move through this process as well.
Now, that made me think of another question. Last one is, so on that data piece, will part of this process, may it also include uncovering better systems to manage those streams of data?
Yes, absolutely. TIS right now is working a data warehousing data initiative. And Public Works is asking, I believe we're going to be putting forward a budget request for this next biennium to be the proof of concept for that data warehousing. So how can we get away from paper and data streams that aren't talking to one another and getting it into a warehouse where it's informing decisions, right? Because right now, it's very siloed.
Interesting. Well, thank you very much.
Mayor Bernie?
I just wanted to share a little bit more. Director Burt was a little humble. But this is actually really very exciting, not just to somewhat modernize how we do things in the city, really in a really productive way. But also, he mentioned TIS, he mentioned HR, the interaction with planning. So I think this is an opportunity for the whole city to learn how these processes are being improved, what we can do further. And I think that there will be some really good spillover into the other departments as well to learn something from this. So I'm very excited, not just for Public Works Department, but for the city overall, to really improve the great work we're already doing. But there's always room for improvement. And I'm really, really excited about the kind of documentation and streamlining of processes. Because to Director Burt's point, you know, we have some code that's pretty old. So it's going to be really exciting to kind of see where this goes. So we'll be excited to come back to you and share kind of some of the things we've learned as we progress along the way.
Well, thank you so much. Are there any other questions? Council Vice President Forsyth?
Not a question. Just, it's really refreshing to hear that us going through this process will not only help the Public Works Department, but we're planning on using what you learned and filtering it throughout the rest of the city and the director's team. So that was a really nice add. Thank you.
Great. Seeing no other questions, we'll say thank you and look forward to you bringing those items back in the upcoming year for us to do the policy side of it.
Yeah, we'll look to do maybe a mid-year check-in when we get into '25, right? I need to get my years right to let you know how we're progressing. So, great. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is council talk time. We do have one hopper item for discussion, so we're going to lead talk time with that. Councilmember Stewart was the lead on that hopper item. So I will let Councilmember Stewart introduce the idea, and then we'll facilitate the discussion. And then we'll follow up with some other talk time items afterwards. Councilmember Stewart?
Great. Well, thanks, everyone. This is overall maybe overkill use of the hopper, but I just wanted to put it all on paper for us and maybe give us a chance to practice this in case it's something we are interested in. I think a lot of us have had the experience of late, there's a lot of interest from the public in different related school issues and folks bringing feedback to us with an assumption that the school board and the city council are more connected in conversation than at least in my experience in service that we have been. So it's just, to put it quite simply, it's been a few terms since we've had a joint meeting with our school board partners. And I'm not sure if we've actually, we may never have had one with Bellevue. So I am interested in us potentially extending an invitation to the Bellevue School Board as well, because a lot of the growth that we are planning for the Overlake Urban Center will impact the Bellevue schools as well. So I think that there's a lot going on, both with what school districts are working on, and then as cities are planning for their future. I think we have a lot of topics of mutual interest at the moment. And potentially, you know, things going out to the ballot, where we're planning for growth, where they're planning for growth, or maybe planning for the opposite of growth. And just wanting to extend an invitation to our school board partners to come in for a joint session with us, if that's something that the council may be of interest of. I certainly think that the public has an interest in seeing us work a little bit more closely together.
Well, thank you very much, Councilmember Stewart. And as Councilmember Stewart mentioned, I think, I did want to note that, you know, in general, should councilmembers have a request or a question on something that could go on the agenda, you can also bring that up to council leadership. But I think when Councilmember Stewart approached me about it, as well as Councilwoman Nueva Camina, you know, I think we talked about that this was a way to kind of more formally bring this idea forward. And I think in particular, the new kind of addition of adding the Bellevue School Board, since it has been talked about, the Lake Washington School District having a discussion with their school board in the past, but it hasn't happened in many years. So just to be able to give everyone some thoughts on that more formally using this form. So just a note on the form. And we'll open it up in case there are councilmembers that have questions. Otherwise, I'll get a sense from the council about whether people are good, I think. Typically with these hopper forms, we, as a reminder, we won't delve into the details of the whole topic, but just get a sense of whether councilmembers would like to move forward with a particular proposal. In this case, it's pretty straightforward. Would you like council leadership to work with the mayor to extend the invitation to these two school boards to do joint meetings individually with our council? See a thumbs up here. Council Vice President Forsyth?
Yeah, happy to support this. I think it's something that we've all requested in one form or another in the past. The addition of Bellevue is awesome as well. And I know we've also, not to take us off-topic, we've also requested a joint meeting with the Bellevue Council so that we can actually have the same similar conversations. So I might just even shoehorn that in there if I could. And I think it's great for us to have these conversations in a public setting so that we are doing that collaborative work in the public eye. And yeah, I love the use of this space to actually have these conversations, even without the hopper form. I think this is the kind of topic that this council talk time is meant for. So I would love to see us utilize this space to do more of these open ideas and conversations.
Other comments? I will make one other comment, which is just a note in terms of topics for discussion. If councilmembers are generally interested in doing this, I heard from COO files a question, just to ensure that we captured anyone's topics of interest that we'd like to articulate to the school boards that we'd like to cover. There are some possible topics that are listed in the hopper form. And just wanted to ask whether there are other topics, as well as to clarify one, which is written in here. It's mentioned about prospective or planned ballot measures. And I just wanted to note that I talked with Mr. Kenny about this. And I think if, for example, we were to meet with one of the school boards and they were planning to put a levy onto the ballot, if they hadn't yet done so, we could discuss the details with them during our meeting. If they have already put something that is going to be voted on, we wouldn't be able to discuss it during that meeting. So, but we would know in advance of that meeting whether or not that would be permissible. And we could definitely talk about, I'll just read for the listening public in case they're not looking at the memo, topics such as RIMM in 2050 and our community strategic plan priorities from our side, including things like our growth pattern, our neighborhoods, human services, our ready work, and transit-oriented development. And then really for the council to be able to hear from our school boards about, you know, school population planning, support services for families in need, student mental health, any school expansions, renovations, or closures under consideration, or any key policy updates, or some of the ideas there. Council Vice President Forsyth?
One thing that we've talked about in multiple iterations of council is SROs and that topic. I know from personal conversations with school board members, I feel like there's a lot of alignment, but we don't necessarily see that in the conversations and the process moving forward. So I'd love to see that added.
Thank you. Any other topics? Any other comments on this item? Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, I love the question because actually, I think what happens in day-to-day life in our roles here is we have thousands of pages of our own to read every month. And I have no idea, you know, what they're reading about unless I take extra time and effort. So I would want to leave enough, you know, open space for like, and what else is a big deal for you in the upcoming year? And we might have a few things to share too, but to leave it kind of open-ended as well so that we have a chance to hear about things that we didn't know we had questions about that are big deals. Yeah.
Yeah, I definitely agree. And I think just overall, to say my piece on this, I'm obviously supportive of it. But I do think, since I co-signed on this hopper item, but I do think that it's a really exciting opportunity for us since we also, as city council members with the families that are going to these schools in our jurisdiction, we hear from them. I even see one person in the audience here who's come to speak to us about situations in schools. Like, we get that feedback. And being able to hear directly in an open, public session about how our colleagues in elected office are kind of looking at this from their roles and responsibilities, I think will be really helpful. As well as I've found past joint meetings with other bodies like this, like, we had one with the Sammamish City Council, I believe, early last year. And it was a really productive conversation. So to be able to do that with one of our, or one or both of our school boards would be really wonderful. Mayor Bernie?
Yeah, I just wanted to share a little logistical challenge, just to share. Happy to work on trying to schedule this. The Lake Washington School District meets on Mondays, and it looks like the Bellevue School District meets on Thursdays. So those are some of the challenges that we face when we schedule joint meetings as well. So I just want to share that generally, when we used to meet with the Lake Washington School District, we'd switch off every year if it was our day or their day. But we'll have to kind of broach that. But we'll have to kind of broach that subject with them if they're interested.
And we could always get creative and schedule a special meeting for ourselves on one of their days, if they'd be willing.
That is why I'm sharing that, is like, because that might actually be what has to happen, especially this later part of the year with budget and everything. And then the other thing, just to share with the listening public, our staff meet with the school districts often. This is just a more elected official-level meeting than staffing meeting.
Yeah, that's, and I think it's great that we do so much coordination, also great to be able to have the public watch the elected leaders kind of have these higher-level discussions on these topics, and hopefully covering topics that our staff work on behind the scenes as well. So hopefully, we can get prepped and advance the conversation. Also note on timing, and Councilmember Stewart, maybe you can speak to this, but I think I understand it probably will take a little bit of time to get this planned. But can you share anything about expectation on timing?
Well, yeah, our schedule, if it's something we want and our schedule is full, then it's something that we may have to book an extra hour somewhere to achieve. And it sounds like there's enough support around the table to be able to do that. I do think, you know, if it takes a few months and we end up kind of closer to the beginning of the school year, that's actually a natural time to be chatting with the school board about what's coming up in the school year. So I'm okay if it, you know, if it takes a few months to get on the calendar, I think that that's fine. I think having a point in time, actually, where we know that we're working toward, actually gives us time to collect a bit more feedback from communities too about what are the things you would like to see these two bodies discussing. So it would be great if we could extend invitations to both school boards this year and see what we might be able to do.
Great. Other comments, questions? All right, well, I'm seeing a majority supporting us making this request, so council leadership will follow up on this request, and we'll keep everyone posted as we hear back. Thanks so much for bringing this up, Councilmember Stewart. So I'll just note for the upcoming business meeting, I sent out the agenda to everyone, but did want to highlight just a few things that'll be on the agenda, a bunch of things that we've seen in committee. Just to note that the Tourism Strategic Plan, which we spent some time discussing, will be on consent agenda for the next business meeting, as well as the appointment of the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee member that we interviewed. And the adoption of the ordinance for the Rosewood Court plot will also be on there, as well as quite a few other items. I'm not going to go through every one of them, you can look through on there. And the staff report will be on Redmond 2050 residential regulations. So please bring your questions to that staff report. I will also note, just update since committee, wanted to confirm that the June 11 study session, we will add a 45-minute item to that, which has two other items before it, to discuss the 25 to 26 budget updates that were brought up in committee today. So I've asked that Director Cochrane email out the slides that we saw. And so that way, we will have about two weeks to be able to look at those in advance and come up with any questions, and hopefully be able to just have time for the discussion that I think we wanted some more from today. And then also just wanted to flag that after that, even though tonight's study session was very short, after that, we do have some pretty packed agendas, especially with getting into budget and doing some of the 2050 items that are still remaining. We're also going to start getting some timelines so that we can see the road to actually finishing Redmond 2050, which is, I think, the final vote date of what we're slated for is November 19th. But we'll be kind of marching steadily ahead throughout the rest of the year as we then also get into budget. And then we'll also note that the June 25 study session will also be covering mayor's salary and council benefits review, which hopefully will be happening simultaneously along with the recruitment of a salary commission looking at council salary. So that's just a little preview of some of the things that are coming up. And I guess one other item is July 23, we will have a deeper study session item update on Plymouth Housing, where Plymouth will actually be coming to speak with us about that project. So those are just a couple of things that are on the extended agenda. We did ask whether we might even want to move that one to a business meeting so that we could have a staff report, and a lot of people who like to come to learn about that item can come and watch it as well. So that one may move, but we're hoping to see that one in July, along with obviously our quarterly updates at PSHS. Council Vice President Forsyth?
I just wanted to hit a little harder on the 2050 date. Was it November 19th? Is that right? So we'll be taking the final action and approving all of that work, which spans my entire time on council so far. So that is a big lift, and I just want to make sure that we're all prepared, get our questions submitted in advance, if it's something that you maybe weren't a part of, or if it's something that, like, I know for me, there's going to be things that I'm like, going to look back and go, oh, yeah, that thing. So it's just, it's a big date, and I want to make sure that since it's at the end-ish of the budget process, that we're all being very mindful of it.
Thank you for that call out. I think we had been discussing this, that if there are pieces that you want to bring up in terms of, you know, sections we've already looked at, or questions, just bring them up as early as you can, around now, so we can get those changes made and we're not at the last minute looking at any changes after kind of this long process. I'd say similarly, we, at the beginning of this year, we spent a bunch of time during our retreat looking at budget priorities. And now the directors are really, you know, baking their budget offers for us, and they'll be coming to talk to us to get feedback. But I would say if there's any, like, major priorities or ideas that didn't get into that list that you plan to bring up later this year, bring them up now. Reach out to Director Cochrane or the mayor and COO files to discuss those items, so that way they can get considered as part of some of the planning for the budget. So that way, they can actually look at how we might fit that into a balanced budget. Mayor Bernie?
If I could just double down on that. So as an example, each of our department's budgets are due this Friday. So this is how early our budget process goes. So we rely on you from your retreat to let us know what is priority areas so that we can bake it into the full budget, so we don't have surprises at the end. So just throw that out there in case there's anything we've missed. But we've been taking your cues from your retreats and other discussions you've had as well to ensure that the budget looks like mostly anticipated by the time you get it in the beginning of October.
Thank you. And actually, I will call on you for a moment, Mayor Bernie. Do you want to give us a preview of tomorrow's State of the City?
I won't give you a preview, but I will just say, if you have the opportunity to come over to the Senior Community Center at 1:00 tomorrow, I'll be giving the State of the City address. Really exciting, surprise, it's been a really, really eventful year. So really appreciate the staff assistance in putting it all together, and the sponsorship of One Redmond, and as well as the Port of Seattle, and Amazon also sponsored it. So should be a really good event. It's free to the community. There's a sign up on One Redmond site, and should be great tomorrow. So I hope to see some of you there, I think, a few people online, in person, that'll be great. So yeah, that's tomorrow. And then a couple other things, as a side note, PSRC General Assembly is on Thursday. I hope some of you are able to join us for that. And then our annual pride flag ceremony is Monday at 11:00 in our roundabout by the flagpole, and I hope that the community can come out and join us with that as well. And perhaps it won't be raining, but if it is, we'll still raise the pride flag. It'll be fun. We've done this, this is probably like the sixth year we've done it, I want to say. So I'm excited to continue that tradition.
Actually, can we go around? I'm just curious who's going to be at the PSRC General Assembly? All right, great. Yeah, just wanted to get a sense of that. And then I missed for State of the City, are people going to be there as well? Okay, great. Got it, thanks. Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you, and thanks for everyone's support on the earlier item. I hope we can have a great conversation, or two. I wanted to check in on an ombuds issue that's been coming back in emails, and selfishly, I take over as ombud on Saturday. So I just want to get the latest on this one. We've been receiving emails about the parking issue with the potential that students are parking in front of mailboxes. The individual has been asking us to amend the RMC on this. And I spoke with Deidra to try to get a sense of if that solution that's being proposed by the resident has been run down by either of the ombuds that have previously dealt with this item, or if I'm going to pick this one up anew next week. I just wanted to get a sense of that one.
It's still sitting where it was. Where Deidra, we're talking about like, what is possible in it, and just waiting for an answer back so we get some direction.
And who's the answer coming back from?
I'll need to, you know.
Okay, so maybe it's actually, you're working on a solution, actually. Okay, great, awesome, cool. Well, thank you.
Maybe on Saturday, you don't get it.
No, that's totally fine if this resident wants to continue to write to us. I wouldn't want to say otherwise. But I do think that he's owed enough response from us on like, this specific solution that he's proposed a couple times to us. Okay, cool, well, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Salahuddin?
I do just want to touch base back on next week's business meeting, where there's going to be a special presentation from students from Stella Scala Middle School. And I know that they're really excited to share with council. They have prepared a presentation, but they also, some of them, some of the students and their families will be coming ahead of time, ahead of the meeting, in case any of the council members want to, you know, meet them, talk to them. I know a few of us have CFD ahead of the next council meeting, and so we might be able to, you know, have a few minutes with the students, but just wanted to put that out there as well. They're very excited.
Looking forward to that. And apologies, I didn't note that when I talked about the agenda. We'll also have a proclamation around Pride Month, as well as a state of health care from Evergreen Health. So, but looking forward to hearing from those students, and thanks for welcoming them in, Councilmember Salahuddin. All right, are there any other comments, questions? Seeing none. Unless there's any objection, this meeting is adjourned.